Okay. Good evening. I have seven o'clock and I'm going to call the meeting to order. And please, clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Greg David.
Present.
Mr. Tyler Dean.
Here.
Ms. Emily Hamburg.
Here.
Mr. Tom Schmitz.
Present.
Mr. John Welch.
Present.
And you have a quorum, Mayor.
Thank you. This evening, we do not have a pastor to lead us in prayer, so I'll do a short prayer and we'll move on. Your heavenly Father be in our midst, help us to work towards the common good of the people of Bel Air and to serve you well in all that we do. Amen. Please join me in bled allegiance to the American flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, equal civil with liberty and justice for all.
This item is to send agenda, oh, determine agenda additions. Do we have anything to add to the agenda?
I have a couple of things I'd like to talk about since it's almost my last meeting.
Okay.
I'd like to talk about council pay again, and I'd like to talk about the spending allowance for our city manager.
Okay, can we move those to the discussions and future issues?
No.
No?
I want to vote on them.
You want to vote on them? Okay.
Yep. All right. We may vote no, but I want to vote on them.
Okay. Well, let's make those.
It can be H and I, or we can leave them after the executive session, but I want to talk about them and vote on them.
Okay, we'll make the council pay item H and the spending allowance item I. And help me remember to call those. All right. Anything, any other additions to the agenda? We're going to move on to consent agenda. So this consent agenda contains amendments of the November 4th city council meeting and the November 10th special city council meeting.
A motion to approve the consent agenda as listed, and this authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
A motion by Mr. Welch, a second by Mr. Schmidt. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Discussion on approval of appropriations ordinance. This ordinance encompasses expenses from October 29th through November 11th. The expenditure is about to almost $4 million. Another reported expense is $300,000, our infrastructure costs for new developments. Those costs are paid through special assessments. So.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Dean.
I move we approve appropriation ordinance number 25 dash 21.
I'll second.
A motion by Mr. Dean, a second by Mr. David. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. This evening, we have a special presentation for Mr. John Welch and Mr. Tom Schmidt. This will be their last full meeting. Next meeting, we will change over to our, we'll start the meeting with our regular council, then we will swear in the new council members and then restart the meeting with the new council members. So I'd like to ask Mr. Welch and Mr. Schmidt, please approach the podium with me. Mr. Welch has been on the council for six years, and he's been a breath of fresh air in a lot of ways. He brings a lot of novel ideas and a lot of outside the box thinking, and we really appreciate that. And then Mr. Schmidt's been on the council for a year and a half, I think is right.
Yeah, a lot of years.
Yeah, and really appreciate all of the insights that you bring to the city council. It's been, been very good. I mean, I think, and I've heard it from others, said some of the things you bring, nobody ever thought of, which is great, that's what we need to know. So anyway, so we have these plaques, one for Mr. Welch, and also you get the official coin. Yeah, don't drop that. One for Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you.
Official coin for you.
Thank you.
Okay, and I think that our photographers like to take pictures, so if you'd like to turn around, I think. Yes.
All right. One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is citizens' concerns. Do we have any citizens that would like to speak with council tonight? I have no cards, so I assume there are none. Move on to council member reports. Ms. Hamburg, would you like to start?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of items. Enjoyed talking to the Boy Scouts last week for their civics badge, and wanted to mention that they collected food for the food bank. And the generous residents left 1,800 pounds of food for the food bank here around Bel Air and surrounding neighborhoods, so appreciate your generosity. Attended the Sedgwick County Associations of Cities meeting in Goddard on Saturday. Had a tag office update, how our county treasurer is trying to relieve some of those issues. Heard from Andrew Nave from Greater Wichita Partnership about data centers. There's some interest in the county and around the state for those, and just how to think about those in terms of their, their great electricity and water needs, and how to make them, make them work, and what would have to happen in a county or in the area to, for that to make sense for residents. And then got an update from Goodwill. Kind of about how we can keep things out of the landfill by donating. Sometimes they get a bad rap because people don't understand their, their charity model, but, but they support, oh, for example, people with intellectual disabilities to be able to have a job and some education programs and things like that through your donations, as well as people, you know, finding great deals when they purchase. And then last thing I was going to mention, as I really have appreciated council member Schmitz and council member Welch on the council. One thing I'll mention about council member Schmitz is we had a really late executive session on Woodlawn, and I was driving down the road like, not 12 hours later the next day, and he was out there like inspecting the road. And that was really, really dedicated over the past year and a half. And council member Welch always thinks outside the box. Sometimes you'll, you'll be in a meeting or on a, in a situation where everybody just wants to rubber stamp something and get out the door, and he's not like that. You always vote your conscience, and it doesn't matter how late it is. There's, you know, you, you vote your conscience and you talk until you've talked it out. So, and, and you can ask him if your vote counts in city elections. One vote can.
Gonna bring that up.
Anyhow, appreciate them both. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. David.
I have no report, but I echo everything that council member Hamburg said on our two departing council members. They've been great. Inspiration to me, all the hard work they put into it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dean.
Mr. Mayor, I do, I also want to thank both John and Tom for your service. I echo as well. A couple of things to add. November 8th, I attended the Taste of Italy Bel Air Lions fundraiser. As always, it was tasty, and I had the opportunity to visit with several people. I want to thank everyone that supported that event, and then all the Bel Air Lions that volunteer their time to work it, and they just do so much for our community. I, I think it's sometimes really underappreciated and, and, but they do a lot. And so I wanted to thank them for all they do in that fundraiser, reinvesting it back into our community. And then I just got done at the Bel Air Annual Volunteer Dinner, and the same thing there. Mayor actually gave a speech and couldn't have said it better. There are so many folks in our community that donate their time, talent, and treasure, and I really appreciate everybody that steps up to make Bel Air a great place to live. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Welch.
Well, usually I have no report, but I did want to comment on the Lions Dinner. I too went to that. It was delicious food. I appreciate everything the Lions do for the community.
Thank you. Mr. Schmidt.
I don't have anything to report.
All right, thank you. Okay, well, I have a few, a few things, so. So congratulations to council member Greg David on his reelection, and to council members elect Mike Proctor and Brandon McIntosh. I look forward to working with the new city council, starting at our next city council meeting in December. On November 5th, I attended the Bel Air Chamber of Commerce lunch. It was a, while he was unable to attend, council member Tyler Dean was awarded a certificate of achievement for the third quarter of 2025, and somehow they gave me the same award for the fourth quarter of 2025. So anyway, kind of an interesting surprise. Our city manager Ted Henry and I conducted a tour of Bel Air with State Representative Steve Brunk on November 6th. That tour took about four hours, and Representative Brunk appreciated the information and said he learned a lot of new things about Bel Air, even though he used to live here, and he still owns property here in Bel Air. We have offered to set this similar tour up for those who are not able to make this one. I've personally spoken with a couple of them. They're still looking at their schedules, but since legislature is back in session on January, time is getting a little tight. November 12th, I attended the local elected officials reception sponsored by REAP. Council member elect Mike Proctor was also there. I was able to visit with several newly elected officials, including the new mayor-elect of Ketchikan, Joni Harris. This is either the second or third time I've attended this annual event, and it's a good social networking opportunity. November 15th, I attended the Sedgwick County Association of Cities, as Ms. Hamburg also had attended, and she pretty much covered everything I was going to say about it. So the only thing I'll add to that is we do have, or at least I received, a slide deck on each of those presentations from our county treasurer, Brandy Bailey, from Andrew Nave of the Greater Wichita Partnership, and another one from Goodwill Industries. So if anybody's interested in seeing those, I can make them available to you. Today, I attended the monthly WAMPO meeting, TBT, TBTPB meeting. WAMPO reduced its unified planning work program cost by over $800,000, from about 2.5 million to about 1.65 million, and that's a commendable improvement. So we, we congratulated them on that. Ted Henry, our own Ted Henry, gave a presentation of Bel Air. And is there, is it going, is something wrong with the audio? Okay, thank you. All right, thank you. So he gave a great presentation about, and highlighting the growth and opportunities that are here in our city. We also learned of an update from Sidewalks, Crosswalks, and Multi-Use Map. This is available for anyone to utilize, and it is on the WAMPO's website. I've not checked the website to see how well it works, so I, I won't vouch for it. It probably works. I usually do a good job with things, so. Sedgwick County is conducting a community engagement survey, and they're sending out 15,000 postcards, 50,000 text messages, and almost 74,000 emails to offer this to Sedgwick County citizens. So if you get one of these opportunities, please complete the survey. They are looking for help to determine what is important to citizens. Sedgwick County will start its 2027 budget process early in 2026, and they are hoping the survey results will give them some better guidance on citizens' priorities. And I do hope all citizens of Bel Air, staff, and members of the Bel Air governing body have a blessed and safe Thanksgiving celebration. Bel Air is truly a blessed community. So I'll now ask our city attorney for her report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I recently attended a continuing legal education conference in Kansas City. It was last week. It talked about a lot of aspects regarding construction, change orders, how to organize documents, how to be efficient with practices. It was very helpful. I can't wait to discuss it with my colleagues. The other update I would provide is regarding Bel Air Municipal Court. It is a very active docket. It happens twice a month, the first and third Thursdays. It's down in the community room. We've been working with staff to try to make it as efficient as possible with our practices, to try to keep cases moving so that they are not sitting on the docket for too long. With Tyler Technology, there's a program for us to use, and it's called Municipal Justice. It went live April 1. It's an electronic case management program, which means you can go paperless. That is an exciting idea for some and incredibly scary for others. We have some attorneys who are like, please do not get rid of your court files. And then others were like, I'm more than willing to use my laptop. So there's a spectrum of excitement and anxiety, but it's really good to learn new things. We are taking webinars, virtual trainings. I have to give a shout out to the departments that are doing incredible work on this. First of all, the Bel Air Police Department, they show up every single docket, keep it safe and secure. They help with fingerprinting, they help with bailiff duties, they just help keep everything moving and smooth. And sometimes you have some individuals who need to take a break from the courtroom, and they make sure we can get our business done. And then the municipal court staff, our municipal court clerk, and our prosecutor clerk, they are in there just moving nonstop. They're just, I don't know how we would do the docket without them. They're, they're really great workers. But I wanted to give an update to the court that when these new technological advancements happen, it does involve a lot of transitions for departments, so we're working on that. It's exciting. If you ever don't have anything to do around 12:30 on a Thursday, you can come by the community room and say hi, and we'll show you how we do it. But it's doing really well. Thank you.
Good, very good. Thank you. Now, city managers report.
I think Maria left off one important person in that, in this transition, you, Maria. Thank you for all your work. Because, oh, here we go. No, I just want to, it's been, it's been a fun process. Like I said, it's touched every part of our city, the, the software upgrade, and this is another example of how we're getting better through this types of, type of process. As Jim, or as council member, or as the mayor and everybody said, I've given a lot of presentations lately, Chamber, Legislative Delegation, WAMPO today. We have a lot of, you know, certainly we have a lot of challenges ahead, but man, there's a lot to be proud of when you look at all the slide deck, and I'll, I'll be happy to share it with the council anytime. Quick reminder, offices will be closed next Thursday and Friday for Thanksgiving. And speaking of Thanksgiving, Tom, John, or council member Schmitz, council member Welch, thank you for everything you've done for us. Council member Welch, we've been together quite a bit, quite a few years. I, I appreciate you making me a better employee, better person, and as well as my staff. It's funny, we have a staff meeting after every council meeting, and we evaluate a lot of your questions because we want to get better and, and, and look at things differently. So I really appreciate what you brought to the council, and we'll always remember a lot of those, those good lessons you've taught us over the years. That's all in there.
All right, well, thank you. Appreciate that. Move on to ordinance resolutions and final actions. The first item is ordinance authorizing issue of taxable industrial revenue bonds. On April 16th of 2024, so this is going backwards. The city council held a public hearing, adopted a resolution, and signed a letter of intent authorizing up to $105 million in industrial revenue bonds for the development of land near 53rd and Webb Road. The developer, Aspen Funds, proposes constructing approximately five buildings, totaling about 200,000 square feet each, which are huge buildings. That's a lot. So the first building has now been completed, and Aspen Funds is requesting the city issue IRBs in the principal amount of $18 million for that building. And Kevin Cowan with Gilmore and Bell is here to present this item and answer questions. Mark Specker, representing the owner, is here via Zoom. Is that, is that accurate? Is he available? Okay, so he is also available for questions, so. Mr. Cowan.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. Kevin Cowan with Gilmore and Bell. Excellent background. That's the story of how we got to here. And as was mentioned, Building 1 is complete. The plan all along, this was discussed with the resolution of intent, is that 105 million would cover several buildings, and this is Building 1. It is complete. The, the real key here in terms of timing is the building is complete, so it will be taxable theoretically next year. It will go on the tax rolls. Part of the incentives on this project were a property tax abatement. That abatement will start in the calendar year following the year in which the bonds are issued. So the bonds need to be issued this year, so that abatement can start next year on a completed building. The, just to remind you, the property tax incentive involves a payment in lieu of taxes where it's essentially 100% exempt for the first five years, and then there will be a 25% payment in lieu of taxes for years 6 through 10. And again, that's the primary incentive that remains. The project did get a project exemption certificate for sales tax purposes, and that was as progress moved along on construction, so they benefited from that as well. So the item for consideration tonight is the ordinance, fairly short. It approves a number of other transaction documents that will be executed in coming days and weeks if the ordinance is approved tonight, and then we're planning for a closing on December 11th. As with many industrial revenue bonds these days, the company will buy their own bonds. They have separate financing, and so the consideration for the bonds is that they will deliver the completed project to the city. And then under our statutes, the city has to lease it back to them, and they'll, they will owe themselves both lease payment, owe the city lease payments and bond payments back to the company. And that's sort of how things have been done more frequently in the last number of years. So I'll stop there. Happy to address questions. As was mentioned, Mark Specker for the company is available as well for questions, updates.
So this is the first of several to come, as buildings get completed.
That is the hope, and Building 2 is in the pipeline, as you may be aware. And so I don't know that it's going to be one per year, as it has been the last couple of years, but yes, they're moving on to Building 2.
Good. Any questions or discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Hamburg.
I'm going to make a motion to adopt an ordinance authorizing the city of Bel Air, Kansas to issue taxable industrial revenue bonds. Aspen Sunflower Industrial, 1 LLC Project Series 2025 in a principal amount not to exceed $18 million for the purpose of providing funds to pay the cost of acquiring land and construction and equipping buildings for the use in industrial manufacturing, warehouse, distribution, flex, and/or office purposes. Authorizing the issuer to, issuer to enter into certain documents and actions in connection with the issuance of said bonds, and authorize all required signatures.
I'll second.
A motion made by Ms. Hamburg, a second by Mr. David. Any questions or discussion? Here and none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Next item is similar, but it's in another industrial revenue bond. So on March 19th of 2024, the city council held a public hearing, adopted a resolution, and signed a letter of intent authorizing up to $12 million in industrial revenue bonds for the development of land on 53rd Street between Webb and Greenwich Road. Walton's proposed construction, constructing a new headquarters building of approximately 100,000 square feet. The building has now been completed, and Walton's is requesting that the city issue IRBs in the amount of $12 million for this project. And Kevin Cowan is with Gilmore and Bell is also here to talk about this item.
So as was mentioned, similar story, similar process, another IRB project that was completed this year and has a property tax abatement incentive associated with it. So with the completed building, we want to get the bonds issued in this calendar year, so that abatement can start next calendar year under our statute. That abatement, to remind all of you, is a 100% abatement in the first year, and then that's reduced by 10% each year with an offsetting payment in lieu of taxes. So you can look at it as 100% abated, then 90% abated, 80%, or you can look at it as 0% payment in lieu of taxes first year, but then 10, 20, 30. And so by the last year, it would be paying 90% of the taxes otherwise due. One of the unique aspects of this project is it does have a very small retail component. And under our statute, the retail component cannot benefit from a property tax abatement. So in the payment in lieu of taxes agreement, we've attached a schematic. I've discussed this with the appraiser in Sedgwick County and identified it's like 2,812 square feet. It's identified as the retail component, so the appraiser will know that's taxable, and everything else can be abated. Any taxes that they do pay on that portion do count against their payment in lieu of taxes. So for example, in the last year, if they were paying 90% as a payment in lieu of taxes, and the retail component was 2.8%, and it's again about 2,800 square feet, 100,000, then they'll get credit for the 2.8% that they paid, and then they'll pay 87.2% as their payment in lieu of taxes. So again, a little different, a little more complicated because of that small retail component. Same track that the hope is if the ordinance is passed tonight, we'll get the various documents signed, assembled, and have a closing in early December.
Okay. Any questions or discussion on this item B?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Dean.
I move we adopt an ordinance authorizing the city of Bel Air, Kansas to issue its taxable industrial revenue bonds, Series 2025B, for Walton's 53rd Holdings LLC for the purpose of the acquisition, construction, and equipping of a meat processing supply and equipment commercial facility, and authoring, authorizing other related documents and actions, and authorizing all required signatures.
I'll second.
A motion by Mr. Dean, a second by Mr. Welch. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. On item C, Bel Air Chamber of Commerce, established in 2009, has continually supported the local business community. The chamber also organizes community events that enhance resident engagement and draw visitors to Bel Air. To support this, these efforts, the Bel Air City Council entered into an agreement in 2022, providing $20,000 for operations and community events. Funding levels since then have been $20,000 in 2023, $15,000 in 2024, and $15,000 in 2025. The approved 2026 budget includes $12,000. At the August council workshop, the chamber president and board members reported that the chamber continues to face challenges, particularly in membership recruitment, and request additional support to strengthen the organization's capacity. Through a series of meetings, the city staff and several opportunities were identified to assist the chamber, including information sharing, promotional support, and aid with membership recruitment. So in 2026, our agreement continues the city's partnership with the chamber at the $12,000 funding level. And.
I'm happy to stand for questions. I invited, I just don't, don't look like they're here tonight, but that's okay. I, like, like the report said in your packet, met with the whole board once, met with the president and a board member another time, and a lot of it is what we've been talking about or what they kind of request. One, we said we wanted to ratchet down from 15,000, so that's what the agreement has, is 12,000. The other element we discussed is how staff can share, information share, meaning we have a list of businesses that apply for business license in Bel Air. We're willing to share that list with the chamber. And likewise, a few things I did add to this agreement is I would, I would appreciate, and I think the council would as well, kind of a year-to-date budget each quarter. I think a lot of times we, they talk a little bit about events and whatnot, but maybe we look at how they're doing financially throughout the year, and then the membership list. The membership list is more, more for, so you guys can see who's members, and maybe if you see a business or you walk into a business, you can say, hey, I noticed you weren't on the list last quarter. Would you, would you mind just make it more well, more well-known for recruitment efforts? Other than that, the, the agreement is pretty similar to what we've done in the past with the reduction of funding from 15 to 12, but also with some requirements to bring a year-to-date financial and a membership list every quarter. And I'll stand for questions and do what I can.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Dean.
I do have a quick question, Ted. I noticed you provided kind of comparisons from the area of what other cities are, are giving to their chambers. Did you, were you able to clarify, are those membership fees to the cities? Or are those like a grant setup agreement like we have? Like, that would be my main question, is kind of how is that relationship set up with those cities?
And I can, I'm 90. And I can, I'm 90, 90% confident they're all just membership fees. They're, we're very unique in this style of agreement with the other areas.
So they just have a higher, what you understand is they have a higher fee. They have different membership levels.
Yep.
And they have a city level. And that's kind of what most of these are based off of, not a grant.
That is, that is my understanding.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Dean.
I'll motion to accept the 2026 funding agreement by and between City of Bel Air, Kansas and Bel Air Area Chamber of Commerce, Inc., and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second. I'll go ahead.
Motion by Mr. David, and a second by Mr. Schmidt. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero.
Mr. Mayor, I do want to add one thing at the end. So the reason why I ask that question is just to pose the idea that maybe in the future, we could consider a different agreement. Just to kind of throw that out there is something as we continue to try to think of, how can we structure it better? So that's why I asked it. Thank you.
Good. Very good. All right, item D is a resolution rescinding council motion on August 19th. So you will see two actions on agenda related to our agreement with SEH. On August 18th, the city council considered and approved a contract with SEH for engineering services for Sunflower Commerce Park Phase Two. The first action rescinds the contract approved on August 18th, and the second action approves an updated contract. In this case, the contract approved on August 18th was premature and negotiations were still ongoing. So to prevent similar miscommunications in the future, the city manager has implemented and updated our internal process to ensure this does not happen again. The contract before you tonight has been fully vetted by both Bel Air and SEH and is now ready for approval. The city manager is available for questions regarding the process and the city attorney is available for answered questions regarding changes within the contract.
What was the amount of the old contract?
It was the same, but let me. There's no change in price, but.
So what changed then?
That's a very good question, John. The first agreement that came in front of city council on Tuesday, August 19th, was the typical standard design contract for the City of Bel Air. There were multiple provisions in it that discuss, for example, anything, any drawings, sketches, those instruments, those deliverables. The City of Bel Air becomes the owner after the project is completed. While SEH, their legal department and their staff were still vetting it, what they would prefer is a non-exclusive license where the City of Bel Air doesn't necessarily become the owner, but the City of Bel Air can definitely use those drawings, those sketches, those, those devices. But there's also an indemnification clause. For example, if the City of Bel Air uses those for other things for what it was not intended and something were to occur with a negative consequence, SEH would not be a party that the City of Bel Air could go after. That is a typical provision in design contracts saying full, free to use those. But at the same time, if you're going to use them in a way that they were not intended and you're using it without the advice and guidance of that consultant, then they want to be indemnified. So that's an example of a provision that they asked for. Force majeure, if anything were to happen, their provision for force majeure is more detailed. It provides more options. For example, supply chains, again, that is not an unusual provision. Many consultants who are working in that business, who are now being affected, I think ever since COVID, some of their business practices have had to change and they've had to be more detailed in their provision. The new contract that is in front of you, the provisions, I would say, are somewhat a little bit more stylistic in a way, just something that they are more used to. But please know that we went back and forth with many conversations and many emails. And I'm smiling at the SEH consultant right now because there were some provisions that I would not recommend to this council. But the end result is something that I have no concerns with.
Thank you. I will motion to approve a resolution rescinding council's prior motion on August 19th, 2025, approving a contract with SEH for engineering services related to construction on Sunflower Commerce Park Phase Two and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
I have motion by Mr. Welch to approve the resolution rescinding the council's prior motion. And a second by Ms. Hamburg. Any further questions or discussion?
Maria, thanks for your work on this. It sounds like you spent some time.
Think she did.
And SEH, thank you for working through it.
If there are no other questions or concerns, I'll call for a vote. All in favor say yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries five to zero. So move on to item E, a consideration of the contract with SEH for engineering services. And this is just approving the newly negotiated contract.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Dean.
I move we accept the contract with SEH for engineering services related to the construction on Sunflower Park, Commerce Park Phase Two in an amount not to exceed $245,500 and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Dean, a second by Mr. David. Any questions or discussions? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Like to ask us to move to item 12A, executive session. How much time do we need for that, Ted? 20 minutes?
Let's try 20 minutes.
Okay, 20 minutes.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. David.
I'll motion to recess into executive session to discuss with legal counsel and receive legal advice relating to pending litigation. Discussion will be pursuant to KSA 75-4319B2 for legal consultation with Neil Gosh, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. Invite Neil Gosh, Catherine Clumsky, city manager, city attorney and city engineer. Meeting will be for a period of 20 minutes and open, and the open meeting will resume in city council chambers at 7:57 PM.
Second.
I have motion by Mr. David, a second by Mr. Dean. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. An executive session for 20 minutes.
Boundary description, and as we create this new description, now is an appropriate time to review all of our existing boundaries to ensure they are accurate. PEC will take current description and trace it on a map to identify any discrepancies between the written description and the city's known boundaries, then revise it as needed. This is a not to exceed fee, also includes any necessary research time if PEC needs to verify specific locations. So I think Ms. Stevens is here to help answer questions on this item.
So as the mayor said, the first step in this process is to plot out the existing boundary as written on a map. It's my understanding that as the city has annexed multiple properties throughout the years, the boundary was just kind of added to by a former employee and with no specific surveying experience.
Let me interrupt you for just a second. Let the record show that Mr. Walsh rejoined the meeting. Thank you.
You're welcome. And one of the pieces that was particularly brought to my attention that really raised some red flags is, they said, hey, Anne, did you know that your boundaries technically go to the middle of K-254? Are you really kidding me? So that really kind of drove home the need to do a more thorough review of the boundaries. I do have a meeting set up with PEC on Friday morning, assuming this goes through to kind of talk over their preliminary thoughts. If everything goes well, they will not spend anywhere near the $15,000. It's probably going to be closer to 5,000 or less. But it's mainly the need for research. Those documents are going back quite a ways, and just being able to find those and put everything together is why that number is a little bit, I'm not going to say inflated, but larger than one would typically see. So that's the reason behind it. I just wanted to make sure that we had the authorization to work through what we needed to get done to make sure the boundary is as close to correct as we can and not let discrepancies continue for any longer.
So we just need to do a more thorough job to make sure we have accurate data for these boundaries.
That is correct.
Make sure that's correct. Okay.
Yeah, it's making sure that the correct term is closure, that all of the lines connect the dots and you have one contiguous quote unquote circle or whatever geometric shape you choose, and there's not holes in the boundary. So it's important when police are going to fight or to respond to accidents or if we have additional annexations or on 53rd, you know, we had a piece that was Ketchikan, a piece that was county, and just making sure that everybody knows who's what and where.
Yeah. Okay.
Question for the city manager, I guess, or city attorney. The only reason this is coming before the council is because of the dollar amount, correct?
Correct. All right. Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt.
I motion to approve Record 2511 to the Masters Services Agreement with PEC dated February 8, 2024 for updating the written description for the City of Bel Air city limits to be utilized in the boundary resolution at a cost not to exceed $15,000 and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Schmidt, second by Mr. David. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, or call for vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. We're on item G. This item is to consider appointing the Bel Air Planning Commission as the Bel Air Airport Zoning Commission. The city attorney has adapted the proposed ordinance and is available for questions. Ms. Rock.
Well, this ordinance is barely one page, just basically saying that per statute, the planning commission, if a governing body has one, if a city has zoning regulations, that the governing body has the authority to appoint the sitting planning commission as the airport zoning commission. When looking at statute, if a governing body is to adopt any regulations that involve airport per the Airport Act and the statutes, then those regulations need to be reviewed by the Airport Zoning Commission. We don't have one. This is an opportunity for the planning commission to learn more, to become more educated, to review the ordinance. They will review the proposed airport hazard zoning ordinance. They will provide a preliminary report. They will have a public hearing. Then individuals, public, will be allowed to go to the planning commission meeting, take the podium, make comments, ask questions. Then, once that is done, the planning commission would have a final report based upon the information they received. That final report will be presented to the governing body. Similar to a zoning case with golden factors, the governing body is receiving a recommendation based upon specific facts of finding. Well, in this specific case, they will provide a report, and then the governing body can proceed. The planning commission is going through a lot. They've just recently been appointed as the Board of Zoning Appeals, and now they're going to receive a brand new hat. These are all allowed through statute, and the governing body is the only body that has the authority to give that appointment to the planning commission.
Are they going to need to meet more often since we're giving them more responsibilities? Or do you think they can get it all done at the regular monthly meeting?
I don't want to speak on behalf of staff who works with them on a regular and consistent basis, but this specific ordinance, it appears to be a one-time event. It's going to come to council for your consideration regarding any airport hazards. to come to council for your consideration regarding any airport hazards. I am not aware of any other airport needs that we need to go in front of the planning commission, just this one specific agenda item.
So there'll be no consideration of building heights or any of those kind of things in future plans that somebody would want to construct?
With the comprehensive plan and add-on, the new airport hazard zone ordinance, if it were to be approved by the governing body, it does discuss height restrictions, plant vegetation for planes that come in and leave Jabara Airport. Those would be parts of the code, if the ordinance is approved, that the planning commission would take into consideration when they have any type of development in that area.
So then it becomes part of the code and they don't have to reconsider it unless somebody wants an exemption from the code.
You are correct.
I see. Okay, very good.
So it'd be a part of their normal business on planning commission at that point, just a part of their normal review process, approval process?
This has been a tool that hasn't been provided to them yet. It's been a step that the city hasn't taken.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, but I think the planning commission doesn't really define the height of buildings. It basically decides the type of zone underneath that's on the ground. But it doesn't say, you know, a tower or, I mean, I know with airports, and we're only talking the north side of Jabara, I believe, and it's the corridor. I assume there's different levels depending on you're right under the runway or, you know, within a hundred yards or five hundred yards, whatever that number is. And I know at this, our airport, there's other issues with animals or whatever you put under there. If it's certain types of things that are going to draw, animals are going to fly into planes, probably not a good choice. So I mean, that would have to be watched, and I don't know the planning commission would deal with that. So who watches that? Is that the city staff that looks at what's being built? Or is it the council that has to look at what's being done here versus, yeah, it's zoned correctly, but what are you building?
Those are very good comments. Council member, our community and development director, who was here speaking about a project not too long ago, there was an application from an individual who wanted to use solar panels. So city staff person looked at that, reviewed it with thorough in their attention to detail, and said that that, that individual, that applicant would need to go through FAA to do a review about whether or not those solar panels as a neighbor to Jabara would be an issue. So staff and applicant had that discussion. They continued to discuss further until a decision was made. That is where that review would come into play.
Yeah, yeah, reflectivity would be an issue. I'm sure. You don't want to, like a mirror on the surface that's going to reflect up into the plains. Yeah, thanks.
Mr. Dean.
I move we adopt an ordinance appointing the planning commission as the airport zoning commission as presented and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Dean, a second by Mr. David. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five to zero. On to item H, council member pay. Mr. Welch asked that we add this item, so I will let him speak for it and see what he has to say.
Well, you all know I've asked for this several times, and I wanted to make it perfectly clear by waiting till now that this is not for me. This is because I really think the council members need more pay. And my proposal would be to add fifty dollars a month to all council members and the mayor's salaries.
Is that a motion or is just a proposal?
I was throwing it up for debate to begin with, but I'll make it a motion. I motion that we add fifty dollars a month pay effective January first to all council members and to the mayor.
I have a motion by Mr. Welch for fifty-dollar a month pay increase for the council members and mayor effective January one, twenty twenty-six. Do we have a second? I'll ask again, do we have a second for this motion? Hearing none, I'll have to call the motion dead, and we can have more discussion about this item or we can move on.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to say, say a few things. So John, thanks for bringing it up again. My view on this hasn't changed. It's so little pay anyway. It's basically volunteering. Like, I think I've said this before. I'm just reiterating what I've said before. I think every time we've had an open or openings, we've had several applicants, like six or seven each time. We had four run for three spots. If we were in a situation where we are having trouble getting people to want to serve, I would see the need. I just don't see the need. One thing I will say is with the recent additions of things that planning commission will have to deal with, with the zoning appeals and the airport doesn't sound like as big of a deal, I would actually be in favor of maybe raising, like I think they get paid a little bit, like, or none. I would actually be in favor of maybe setting aside some money for them. I know they only meet once a month, but I think if that's, I don't know.
Yeah.
If that's a legal ability to do, but that would actually be my preference if it was possible, but I know that it might not be, so.
I think they've looked into that and they found out that you cannot do that.
Right. So anyway, that's my two cents on it, and that's kind of how I feel. But appreciate you bringing it up, and I know why you're bringing it up, so.
Okay. Any other discussion on that item? If not, we'll move on to item I, which is a city manager's spending limit. And Mr. Welch, would you like to elaborate on that?
We have discussed this several times and never done anything about it. With the cost of inflation over the last few years, projects are getting higher priced. That means things like item F are coming before council that wouldn't used to have come before council because the manager had a spending limit that would cover it. And I would like to see his spending limit increased to fifteen thousand.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Hamburg.
Yeah, I think that that does make a lot of sense. And actually, it ties back in, at least the way I'm thinking about it, to council pay as we can shorten meetings. You know, if he can just approve things like this with that increased limit. Does the city manager feel like going from ten to fifteen thousand is, sounds reasonable, seems like the right amount?
Yeah, just looking in the area, I know Park Cities is twenty. Barry, do you know what Valley Center's? Ten. Okay, so fifteen sounds like right in the middle to me, but it's up to you guys, of course.
John, thanks for bringing this one up. I agree. I think it needs to go up. I think I would have probably approved this long time ago, but it hasn't come back up again. I would actually be okay with ten or with twenty. I know it's ten now. We've probably held it at ten for too long, to be honest. It probably should have went up years ago. So fifteen, twenty, doesn't matter, but I think it's a good idea.
Well, people want to go to twenty? I didn't want to make that big a jump on my own, but, but I could sure push fifteen.
I would support fifteen. I think that's fine.
Okay, I make a motion to increase the city manager's spending limit to fifteen thousand dollars.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Welch to increase the city manager's spending limit to fifteen thousand dollars, and a second by Mr. Dean. Any additional questions or discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries five to zero. Okay. Move on to item thirteen A, Budget Amendment Overview. Mr. Barry Smith, the Director of Finance, is here to enlighten us with his overview. Because you're going to have to, we're going to have to do a budget, we're going to have to do a budget amendment before the end of the year, is that correct?
Correct.
For twenty twenty-five?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's why I wanted to talk about council member pay before we got to him.
It wasn't, you weren't talking about effective this year.
I'll keep it brief here. So state statute allows municipalities to amend their budget on annual basis if needed. And we find ourselves in that position for twenty twenty-five. And as you know, when we do our annual budgets, they are roughly eighteen months in advance of when those budgets actually occur. So for twenty twenty-five, we had some extra street repair maintenance from the twenty twenty-four street plan that carried over into twenty-five that wasn't in the twenty-five budget, which increased our expenditures for twenty twenty-five there. Our stormwater fund with the bridge replacements that we recently did, we'll go over our expenditure authority for twenty-five, so we'll amend that one. And also regarding the new public works building and the base grant we received, we just need to amend the budget to book in that additional grant revenue and those additional expenses we incurred. So that's really what the amendments are going to be when I bring them back to you next meeting. In the memo, I did lay out the calendar. It does follow the similar process as the normal budget process, although during an amendment, it has nothing to do with property taxes. You cannot gain or gather increased property taxes during the amendment process. So because of that, the revenue neutral rate policies do not apply. So it is simply, we publish, we have a hearing, we approve the amended budget for twenty twenty-five. I'll send it off to the county and the state, and it will be good to go. So that's kind of a quick overview of the process, and at the next meeting, I'll have it all detailed out for you for review and be able to answer any questions.
Will this be on the agenda before we seat the new council or after?
It'd be after.
Okay, okay, because you'll have two new members who won't have any exposure to this. I mean, one has exposure to budgets, but yeah, this, this idea or this, the data of this one in particular. Okay.
The next meeting, we'll, we'll set the hearing at our December, second meeting, we'll set the hearing for December sixteenth.
Oh, you guys had a hearing.
Yeah.
All right.
So our next meeting, I'll explain, explain everything, get you all the details. We'll set the hearing for the last meeting of December, and then we'll have time to answer questions for our new council members in between, if they have any as well.
Okay, I wasn't understanding the hearing part of it. I thought you were going to make the proposal next time, and we're going to prove it the next time, but you can't do it that way. Okay.
Not that quick.
Very good. Thank you. All right. Any questions for Mr. Smith?
Mr. Mayor. I, I guess, Barry, you'll explain it next time, where the funds are going to come from, and since you can't change mill levies or anything, you said.
Yeah, like, for example, just real quick, like the street maintenance program, since we didn't finish that program in twenty-four, we carried over a lot more cash than normal, so we're just spending down that extra cash that we had. So it's all coming within those funds themselves. There's no additional revenues other than the grant revenue for the public works building. So it's money we already had. It's just we're spending it now instead of ten months ago or sixteen months ago.
And not just the, the street one in particular, that's kind of related. We used to have it in the capital improvement program, and that doesn't have a year-end spending authority. But because we moved it to the street fund, because I think a couple of years ago, we said we should do a million dollars a year just as maintenance. So that's kind of where we've, we run in, if we follow, projects fall in between fiscal years, that's, we'll have to come back and amend the budget. But it's more clear for citizens to see it in the street fund. So it's one of those, a little bit of a budget amendment process, but yet it's more transparent for citizens to see street projects be out of the street fund.
Yeah, thanks for that clarification, Ted. And I totally agree with that process because I think CIP projects should be separate from street maintenance. So I agree with that, and thank you for clarifying that. Thanks, Barry, too, for giving us a heads out. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is fourteen, adjournment.
I motion to adjourn.
A motion by Mr. Welch, a second by Mr. Schmidt. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries five to zero.